What you and I can do is coordinate maybe after this meeting and figure out what tasks you want to do and what tasks I need to do.
Okay.
And then eventually you'll have a to-do list of... Yeah, we're also going to be looking for someone to do the mowing and maintenance and everything moving forward, so we'll be working on that more at the administrative meeting. We don't have to talk about that now.
Right. Any other questions? Now that we have a motion and a second, a roll call vote to approve the motion?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you very much. Schedule a budget work session.
Aren't you all so excited? Barbara...
Be still this beating heart.
I know. Barbara and I would like you to be here on Saturday, March 5th, from 10 to 12.
I have to wash my hair that day.
Get up early.
March 5th, what time?
Saturday, March 5th, from 10 to 12. And it'll be the same drill that we followed in previous years. We will have the three separate budgets already drafted. Barbara and I and all of Joe sit in on it also. So we'll get it drafted. We'll sit down like we have the last couple of years and we'll just go through it and do whatever we need to do.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for, you know, the last two have been so smooth running and so you've set high standards for yourself.
Yes, thank you. Who's going to replace me?
Hmm, who knows?
Yo, stop laughing.
Can I add an item for that session or...
Oh, well, we don't have to do it now.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else then? So Saturday, March 5th.
Yes.
From 10 to 12. This is...
Here. It's a work session.
This is a work session for the town council.
No public forum, no... Anybody's welcome to attend, but there won't be any public forum, no Q and As or anything. Strictly a work session. Exactly.
Okay.
Like rules?
Have a guy. All right. Post office ribbon cutting ceremony. I just put this down because I thought, after all the toil and trouble that we've been going through, that we should have some kind of celebration. The postmistress has asked that we not do it immediately because they want to make sure that everything's squared away. So I was thinking in the next two to three weeks, two to three weeks down the road, that we would have something. And I didn't know if anybody on the town council, vice mayor, who might be willing to help coordinate something.
Did I hear that word?
Yes, but I can't remember who it was.
Typically, a ribbon cutting is right in the beginning.
It is, but she asked that it be...
What do you... So you think it's more than a ribbon cutting, something else?
I think it's open to... I think it's a celebration. It is a celebration that a long endeavor that has been three years in the making and is finally culminated into a beautiful building and that's the innovation of a new area of the town. So it is really a celebration. It is an opening per se, and it won't be right at the beginning of when the building opens. So maybe it's not a ribbon cutting, maybe it's a celebration of some sort.
I would agree that ribbon cutting happens when you open something.
Right.
It seems if it's been open for two or three weeks, having a ribbon cutting...
We just have a recognition.
Exactly.
Just a recognition event. And if we do it on the 28th, which is the last day of February, which happens to be a Monday, so we get it into that month, this month, as opposed to slide into next month. So we just... You opened it, we recognize you, great, everybody have a good time, use the post office.
Let me talk to Tina about it.
Yeah, talk to Tina about it. And then I'm sure I will be happy to help wherever, and I'm sure other members of the town council will be happy to help as well.
Thanks.
So. All right. And Marianne, thank you very much.
Very welcome. My pleasure.
The last piece of information is, I don't think we've done something formal. And so Mr. Krim is a valuable asset, and we are grateful to have his expertise with us. But it would be very easy for every... He's such an accessible person and such a friendly person, that would be very easy for us to get into a bad habit of picking up the phone every time we have the slightest legal question. And unfortunately, we got a little bit spoiled by Mr. Bennett. And I think we have to develop some more discipline in terms of our contact with the town attorney. And so what I am looking for is a... I don't know if it's a resolution or if it's what, but what I want to do is create a policy that if you need to contact the town attorney, that you should go through the town clerk slash administrator. Because one of us or a member of the architectural review board or the planning commission may have a question that's very similar to a question that you may have or that I may have. Instead of his answering the same question and we being billed accordingly, that we can maybe combine some of this information and therefore be more efficient in the use of Mr. Krim's time.
And I think that's a good idea because I think at the moment, Martin, you and Barbara have... You talk every week. You have your list of things. And I just think it just needs to be a policy that nobody contacts the town attorney directly. And that should include the zoning administrator. I think we could do it for both, that everything goes through Barbara. If it's an emergency, we call the mayor.
Right.
But I think Barbara needs to be the keeper of the gate.
Now, the only exception, I'll say that, is I know that Mr. Garrison and I will have conversations about different issues.
Oh, yeah.
As mayor. And I wasn't sure...
I said his mayor was excused.
Okay.
Within reason. And if he starts abusing either of you, you just call Barbara.
That's right.
Does there really need to be a policy? Couldn't we all agree that this is what we want to do?
Well, it's not only just this group, but it's also the architectural review board and the planning commission and other members.
It's just a simple administrative policy.
Sounds like an administrative thing.
It's just an administrative policy.
And why can't we just put out a memo to or an email to everybody?
Yeah.
All right.
Right.
I just wanted to find out, is that...
I think it's a great idea, I just don't think we need a policy.
No, it just needs to be a memo.
Mr. Krim, is that...
Certainly. I mean, where the rubber hits the road is when somebody calls me and I say, I'm sorry, I need you to... Or have you talked to Barbara? Has Barbara okayed your call to me? And if the answer is no, well, check with Barbara first.
Yeah. Right.
That's where the rub might be because it's like, oh, this is just a quick question. Let me just get two minutes of time.
No.
No. It's going to have to be very strict.
Right. All right. So your normally affable self will have to take on a mean side at that point.
Yes, very so.
Okay. All right. I'm sure you have it in you. All right, then I will go ahead and create such a memo, and then we will have it available.
Yeah, just a quick... You can just give it to Barbara.
Yeah. All right.
And I think the... Anyone even outside of council, ARB, just the general public should be aware of the same basic courtesy and practice that inquiries that would be directed to the attorney be directed first to Barbara as administrator.
Yeah.
I know on the website, we have the zoning administrator's phone number as the office. So that part's covered. I don't know about Mr. Krim, so... But we can work on that. That's administrative, we don't have to do it here.
The only exception, as I'm considering the situation today, would be for the mayor, if the mayor has to have conversation.
Exactly.
Okay. Good.
And you always keep Barbara up to speed anyway, so that's all that matters.
All right. Good. I appreciate that.
It was easy.
We now have a public forum. The public forum is open. We welcome comments from the public. If you have comments, please come up to the microphone, state your name and whether you are a resident of the town or the county, and please share your thoughts.
Nancy Bont, in the town of Washington. You talked about solar panels. You've made a... Have you made a policy?
We have not made a policy. It was referred to the planning commission for them to do a study.
Right.
Of solar panels.
Yes, I'm Sharon Propper in the county. I also remember talking about possibly a solar panel generator.
Yes.
And I was thinking that little strip that's behind the town camp... I mean, the Washington apartments over there, the schoolhouse apartments, there's a little strip there that goes down to the sewer plant thing. But anyway, I was thinking that would be a really neat place to put solar panels, and then you could put trees there to block it from the highway. But to use that area and have the grid set up so that it can go through the whole system for the whole town, and also a generator to be like a battery from those solar panels to go into that, and also to have a big tank there that you could also use either propane or heating oil in case you needed a backup. But I was thinking that area so that you don't have to have solar panels on the top of houses and all that stuff. It would be right there in the same place that you already have that kind of equipment.
That's a great, great idea. Thank you very much. So you're talking about behind Main Street...
I'm talking about Mount Salem Avenue.
Behind the school.
Behind the school.
Oh, behind the schoolhouse.
There's a little strip there.
Yep.
That goes down to the school.
Yep.
And if you put trees there, but not to block...
Right.
Sort of one, not to block the town.
Right.
That would be facing southwest, down there.
Yeah.
That would be there after you plant the solar panels.
That's a great idea. And I know the owner of an adjacent property is already thinking about solar panels near that particular area, so thank you for that. Thank you for that. Good thought. All right. Is there any other interest from the public to speak? If not, I will close the public forum and I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. I so move.
A second?
A second.
Those favor roll call?
Yes.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Love it.
In of the council for the town of Washington. And we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda and then a second? And then I have some additions that I would like to add to the agenda. So do we have an approval for the agenda first?
Sure.
Gail is giving that.
I so move.
And a second. And Marianne, seconds. What I'd like to add is, under new business, C, post office ribbon cutting ceremony.
Oh.
And D, a resolution, I presume is going to be the right way to go, Martin, but we can talk about it when we get to that point, a resolution to regarding access to the town attorney. I want to set up a policy. And rather than do it as a mayoral fiat, I'd rather get the consensus of the town council on that. And I'll explain it as we go along.
Yeah, because I thought we already had it. Maybe we just didn't vote on it. Okay.
We didn't. We didn't do it. So, Gail, since you made the motion, are you... Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none. Gail, are you comfortable with the two amendments or the two additions?
I'm fine.
Are you comfortable? All right. Roll call vote to approve the amended?
Yes.
Yes, Jean?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And we have the minutes both from the January, and then I presume also the other meeting, the special meeting?
Yes.
Is that in here too?
She sent that up today.
That was sent to us?
Yes.
It was emailed to us, I don't know if it's here.
The...
That we're submitting?
Yes.
Open your packet.
Perfect. Okay, it's not on...
I was here.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Yeah.
I keep forgetting, I look at the original, the draft agenda rather than at your actual agenda, so... Because I put all my notes on the draft agenda, my mea culpa. Are there... Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Marianne moves, and Gail seconds. Are there any changes?
I didn't see any.
Better not be.
Joe, you're looking very studious. Anything? Okay. All right.
I read those earlier.
Okay.
I have any objections.
Roll call vote to approve, Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, they are approved. I only have two things to report on. The first, I got an email today from postmistress Tina, who's the postmistress for the Washington Post Office. If everything goes to schedule... But if everything goes to schedule, they plan to open next Tuesday.
Yay.
The 22nd, over on Leggett Lane and Warren Avenue. So that is very exciting. That whole process began, what was it, January of 19, I believe?
January of 1919, I think.
Yeah, I know, 1919, it seems like. Anyway, it's nice to have that done. Second piece of news is I got formal confirmation today that we received a grant from the state gap funds that will pay for a complete assessment of multimodal routes through and around town that includes pathways and trails and sidewalks and other planning aspects. So this is not actually doing the construction, this is doing a thorough and complete assessment. They're using their... They've contracted with a consulting company, and I can't remember the name off the top of my... I think it's Columbia Systems or something like that. The cost of the project is somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000 that we will benefit from.
That's great.
So, and I sent the information to you.
The assessment, meaning, could you explain that a little bit?
Though, they will do, where are we missing sidewalks? Where should we have sidewalks? We've talked roughly about pathways around town. They're in the... We talked about making the town more pedestrian-friendly in our comprehensive plan. And so this is a significant step towards that goal.
Does this include assessment of sidewalks and just repair?
We did that last fall, and they have put those on their schedule to fix some of those, so...
Does that grant money will be used for that?
No, the grant money is just for planning.
For planning, okay.
Yep. And those are on VDOT's list.
The repairs are on VDOT's list.
Yeah, they did Mount Salem three months ago, four months?
Yeah, they did Mount Salem back in...
November, I think.
November. And then I walked around with the representative from VDOT around the same time and looked at repairs that needed to happen on Gay Street, on Porter Street, and... I'm trying to remember if there was any place else.
Right of the courthouse.
Yes, we talked about it in front of the courthouse. Yep. All right, and that's the... That's my report. Treasurer's report?
Thank you. Hopefully you've had a chance to glance at it. I did finally feel comfortable enough that I moved $100,000 up to the LGIP so we can start my goal, finally. Thank you COVID, of getting a true contingency fund going, so that's looking good. Do that each year would be lovely.
So we have a bills to be paid, unless there are...
I know, I haven't gotten to that yet.
Treasurer's report, okay.
Got my report in here, the spreadsheet.
The bills be paid, right.
No. I'm just talking about my report.
Okay, okay, thank you, okay.
It may be underneath the other things.
I don't have it.
It may be underneath the other things.
It was on top of it.
Look under your minutes. It may have attached to the back of your report.
No, it's not here. I don't have it. Okay, anyway, I'll look at Jean's. Oh, thank you, okay. I have it for it.
And you have also attached is the bills to be paid, nothing unusual. You have any questions on anything before I make a motion to approve?
When you make a motion to approve, we're approving the treasurer's report and the bills to be paid.
You don't have to approve my report.
You don't?
That's strictly a report of numbers. What you... What the council has to approve is the bills to be paid.
Right, because I wondered about that, because doing the... Editing the minutes in the last couple of times, it was just the bills to be paid that we approved and not the treasurer's report. When did that change?
We've never had to. It's never been something that...
Technically, you've never had to approve the treasurer's report.
Really? Oh, okay. I don't remember.
No, that's strictly a factual, out of the computer.
Okay.
Mr. Krim, you're always welcome to correct us if we're wrong on any of these points.
Nothing's wrong that I've heard so far.
Okay.
Any questions on the bills to be paid before I make a motion to approve?
Have we talked with Cody, where do we stand on the ESS contract? Still being reviewed?
It's done.
Done.
Oh, it's all signed?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll be right back.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're under the new contract, which has increased hours and...
Right.
Perfect, perfect.
Do I make a motion to approve the bills to be paid?
Thank you, Joe. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? If not, Jean, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We're kind of going, I guess, where this is the order that we're going to use.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Let's see if it has the same. All right, Mr. Krim.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a lot to report since I last saw you. I did have a long conversation with John Bennett about the boundary line adjustment on the 8th of February, and I reviewed today the muni billing contract that's going to be the new billing software that you're using, and provided Ms. Batson with some comments and proposed edits to that. But it... When I got into it, it was actually pretty decent as a contract. I don't practice law in North Carolina, so I can't approve a contract that's governed by North Carolina law. And I'm just kind of philosophically opposed to arbitration, so I suggested we cut that. But other than that, there's not that much to change.
Good, yeah, I thought it was a pretty good contract.
Great. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Yes, and thank you, Barbara, for all your hard work on finding it.
So I stand ready to answer any questions, Mayor.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Krim? All right, sir, thank you. Steve Garrison, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you. You've got my report in front of you. Just briefly, the... I'm working with the planning commission, both with the comprehensive plan and a few ordinance changes. And those are the full ordinance, and hopefully soon the solar standards for the town. In addition to that, I think I can report to the council that the easy permits have been completed, the more complex ones that deal with site plans and special use permits. I've had meetings with all the inquiry... The people who have inquired about those and the applicants, and hopefully those will be coming forward in future meetings to the town council once they get to having a complete application for submittal. And still at the top of my list is completing revised applications to help people through understand the application process, so rest of my reports in your folder.
All right.
Be happy to answer any questions.
So are we going to see some of these zoning adjustments or submittals as town council? Is that what you said?
So the site plans and special use permits, yes, they would eventually come as either information or as an action for the town council to act on special use permits specifically.
I guess to note that I'm implicit in what I think Mr. Scheier is saying is that if there's something that is of a technical nature, of an infrastructure nature, it probably would behoove us to run things by him at some point in the process.
Well, and I think also just some general things, like we never saw a improvement or whatever you want to call it, planned for the post office. They just planted stuff. Council never saw anything from that committee. So that's where I'm thinking that we should be able to put our eyes on more things than we have in the past.
All right.
And the site planning process is that enforcement documented in the town code and the zoning ordinance for us to look at and then enforce when...
Right. What I was referring to is, we set up a committee to look at beautification of the post office, because we were allocated some money from the developer. But council never saw any layout of what they were going to do. So subsequently, what happened is, we have trees planted right on top of utilities.
Okay.
You know, because nobody... I mean, I would have looked at that and said, don't put trees here. You want to put a bush, fine, but don't put a tree. And now they're there. So it's that kind of thing where it ain't necessarily be the technical, it might be a little bit aesthetic, but I think it's worth the council getting to see some of this stuff before it just gets executed. Even though you say, well, it meets the criteria, I think we should still get a chance to look at it before it's, you know, allowed to go forward.
Mayor, I would echo that thought and suggest that if there is a tree planted on an existing easement town or some other utility easement, that it needs to go. It's going to need to be easier to get rid of it now than it will in 20 years.
That changed, though they were moved.
Oh, good.
And then the kind of trees that were planted were specifically planted... They had knowledge of the utilities.
Okay.
And they planted specifically trees that would not disrupt them.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Steve a question. Steve, can... Is there any way that we could be more specific in what you're doing here as far as where these applications are, like for residential addition, where?
I can do that.
Or the commercial ones, where? And that sort of thing?
I can...
I mean, I think it's a great, great piece of work that you did here, but I just would like a little bit more spec... You know, specific.
I can list the addresses, and I think that would be helpful.
And I can walk around town and look.
Okay.
How should we, as a town council, how should we have... Do we want Mr. Garrison to actually bring site plans to the meetings and have them here for everyone to look at during the meeting? Or should we say that they're available in the town clerk's administrator's office? I'm just asking kind of a procedural...
That's a nice idea.
There's a procedure outlined in the town code or, I'll say, the zoning ordinance for site plans. So that's the procedure I would follow.
Okay.